Yeah, it's only Wednesday.
I know.
Did you get cool business cards?
Yeah, they're really cool. I don't know who had it with me, but she's like, now people are gonna blink. Oh, yeah.
That makes sense.
That's perfectly good.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Calling this meeting to order at 5:02 PM. And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Figueroa?
Present.
And it looks like Commissioner, Alterna Commissioner Gutierrez is absent. Commissioner Gonzalez? Is he waiting at all on Zoom? Gonzalez. Vice Chair Navalette?
Here.
Chair Vigen?
Here.
Oh, and then Commissioner Leal is absent.
Okay. I think someone has their hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to receive the interpreting feature. I don't have it here. This is Alex, interpreter.
Alex, I'll go ahead and add to.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to our only item for this study session, which is the Architectural Design Workshop by Henry Lenny.
Okay, yeah, thank you Chair and members of the Plan Commission. This item today is a special item. It's a design workshop. We haven't had a design workshop since I started with Citi, and we thought this would be a good opportunity to really focus in on design by a professional. So Henry Lenny is gonna be the presenter today. He's an architect. He has a firm called Henry Lenny Design Studios. Just a little bit of background about Henry. He was born in Guadalajara, Mexico, and at a very young age, he decided to become an architect and later graduated from la Autónoma de Guadalajara School of Architecture. He has over 32 years of practice ranging from custom residential homes, commercial mixed-use projects, hotels and municipal projects. And his architectural philosophy is explore creative solutions that reflect the lifestyle goals and aspirations of his clients while maintaining the architectural design principles of the past and applying them to any style of architecture respecting the character and history of the community. So a little bit of background, how I came to know Henry Lenny is, when I used to work in the city of San Clemente, there was actually design guidelines in their city named after Henry. They're called the Henry Design Guidelines, and I would hear his name all the time, like in the city. And so he is like, you know, he is definitely, you know, the professional in that field that, you know, if you're talking about architecture design that you would see in Santa Barbara or San Clemente, he is behind a lot of the buildings that you would see out there. But if you saw his bio, he has projects all over the world. You know, different countries around the world. His training was in Mexico. But when I talked to him, I told him, you know, I have an interest in doing a design workshop here in Coachella that I think would be beneficial because we get a lot of development projects. We're trying to do a lot in our downtown. The way he describes development is pretty amazing, right? So he really tells a story about what goes into the design. So when you take a tour around the city and look at the architecture, you'll have a different perspective and it'll almost be like a story. And so I really appreciate his presentation style. But let's get started and, you know, the presentation will be about an hour. I think at the end he'll leave some opportunity to ask questions.
Okay.
So, Henry, I'm glad you're able to join us. We could see you on Zoom, and we'll pull up your presentation right now. Henry, could you tell us how you ended up from Guadalajara to Santa Barbara?
Well, Santa Barbara was my parents' vacation spot. And my first trip to Santa Barbara was in 1948. That was a long time ago, and every subsequent year. But we would land from Guadalajara to the International Airport in Tijuana, then stop in San Clemente and take another train and move on to Santa Barbara where we spend our summers and winters here. And eventually, I got stuck in Santa Barbara. My father and mother moved. My father became ill and he passed away, and again, my mother and my brothers ended up in Santa Barbara. But ironically, over the years, I spend more time in Mexico than in Santa Barbara because we had numerous projects throughout Mexico, Guatemala, Peru, and some of these other places, primarily designing luxury hotels for some of the major companies that we have here. And of course, up to recently, COVID put a stop to all of that. We have projects in London and we had projects in India and Abu Dhabi. But it's just nice to be home and stay put for a while, which gave me, as I'm sure to all of you, a time to reflect where we are and where we've been and where we're going to go, I suppose. And so it's really a pleasure to be here because I think before the pandemic, we used to travel to Palm Springs quite a bit. And primarily because we love Palm Springs and the whole Coachella Valley, actually. But I was very interested on the architecture and some of the developments that had occurred. We stayed at the Estrella Hotel, which is a historic hotel with bungalows. And we basically started documenting some of the architecture and some of the activities of the whole Coachella Valley. And so when Gabriel asked me to make this presentation, I was really excited to do this. And hopefully, my presentation will at least inspire you to take a certain direction, which is critically important, I think, if one is to preserve one's personality or one's character. So, all right, Gabriel, why don't we just begin and dive into this?
Okay, great.
All right. Why don't we go on to the next slide?
I'm not able to change the key. Is there an on button? Okay, okay.
Well, this is the outline of what we want to talk about. First of all, an introduction on the inventory that I took in some of the historical styles, the late 1800s to the present, essentially. The historical character and personality of Coachella. I found that architecture is a reflection of the of the culture of every city and every country in the world. And this is why it's so imperative to try to preserve that as we go through many multiple developments over the years, is never to lose that identity. And the history is incredibly interesting from the migration of the Mexican farm workers. Not quite sure why they chose Coachella, simply because the weather is so harsh and it must have been a challenge to grow things under that environment. But nonetheless, there was an enormous contributions, I think, to the city of Coachella. And also, the fact that the history shows that there were people that came from Japan and the blacks and developers and eventually became another Hollywood or another Las Vegas with the famous Frank Sinatra and the Rat Pack and so on and so. What an amazing, fascinating history. And I was always impressed by that. But again, the fact is that the history that currently exists in Coachella has to, in my opinion, at all costs, be preserved and never forgotten. Whatever we do in the future, whatever developments come along, long after all of you and I are gone, that preservation of the personality of the city of Coachella has to be maintained, otherwise we fall short and we become something like Santa Monica. Unfortunately, Santa Monica completely lost its personality. It lost its character with the pressures of development and housing and so on. All the new buildings are paper thin and they, there's cubes and slats, and they try to mitigate that by painting each cube and each slab a different color. That's not architecture, in my opinion. That has nothing to do with Santa Monica. And there's other cities that, as you know, have gone the same way. Santa Barbara, Monterey, so many other communities have managed to preserve that. And just before we go on, there is a coloration between the character of each city to the amount of money that comes into the city because you begin to create a destination place in which exists no one else in the world. Similarly to Santa Barbara and Monterey and some other places. People go there because they heard about it and they go and shop and they they leave with an impression of that it was a wonderful place that they had just come from. Now, moving on to the different architectural styles that we had is from the very beginning, the wood facades, the western facades, which you would find in many, many places. The adobe styles, the neoclassical styles from the Midwest, the Mission Revival styles that really came from some of the adobes in the development of the Mexican landlords. Later on, the Spanish colonial revival style changed everything in Southern California, Florida, Texas, et cetera. And then the mid-century modern, which actually we said derivative of the contemporary style of architecture. The next thing is what I just briefly talked about is the character-defining features and the identity of the community. In Coachella, there is the desert designs, which which introduces porches, arcades, logias, courtyards, plazas, basels, urban landscaping, wide sidewalks, and outdoor dining and the attempt to minimize the traffic circulation. There was a big mistake that happened during the late 1940s and 50s where the decision-makers at the time decided to segregate the residential communities and developments that they had, completely separate from the commercial development. Well, that gave rise to the use of the car. Los Angeles was one of those communities in which there was no mixed-use neighborhoods anymore. And in order to go and get a loaf of bread, you have to get in your car, drive three miles and come back to your home again. That was a fatal mistake, I think, and it was not a healthy one, I think, for many cities. But it didn't happen just in the United States. Brasilia in Brazil is one of the perfect examples of how big of a failure the exchange from pedestrian functions to the automobile occurred. There were no sidewalks. There were no people spaces in Brasilia. There were highways, and that whole concept came from Leclercia, the famous French architect who really was a bit of a recluse and could not relate well to people. And that explains why he preferred to have a whale oil machine to drive the city. And again, a terrible mistake that occurred. So I think we're reversing paths now. Now we're doing exactly the opposite. We are shortening and limiting our automobile circulation. And whatever is left of that is given to the sidewalks, to the people. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. So the next item is the protection and preservation and enhancement of the character. Number one is to preserve, restore the historic buildings that you currently have, and there's quite a few. And then also respecting those historic buildings by making adjacent developments compatible and sensitive to the historic structure. Next is the size, bulk, and scale and neighborhood compatibility. I think just as it is important to have some contrast and variation in the plan of the city, there is also equally important to have contrast and variation in the heights of the buildings. of the city, there is also equally important to have contrast and variation in the heights of the buildings. One tall building goes up. The next one is medium and the other one is three stories, two stories and one stories. That makes a really interesting pedestrian experience as you are approaching some of these buildings from a distance. And then finally, is I envision Coachella having a downtown which with mixed-use structures, live-work spaces. You know, affordable market rate rental housing mixed in with luxury housing as well. Putting emphasis on local shops and families and so on. And giving those spaces, I think, to the people that are very talented, everything from bakeries to crafts, art galleries, flower stands, vegetable stands and so on. And in craft stores. Now, by by encouraging this and discouraging the Starbucks and the Forever Twenty One and H and M stores. I think what you will find is that you're going to be creating a city in which a lot of people from different parts of the world are going to come. You already have a captive audience anyway with the Coachella Valley Music Festival. So your audience is going to be there. And also by creating the small shops, the small retail spaces. It makes it very affordable to the people that live in Coachella and not necessarily importing other companies or people that would invest money and disrupt the whole economic balance of the area. All right, Gabriel, let's go on to the next one. I'm gonna go through this quickly because a lot of them you probably already know, but I did mix in some examples of other communities and places. This this is a very typical technique that was done at the turn of the century or actually in the late eighteen hundreds. Where buildings were very utilitarian and very simple. I think they they try to find wood or materials that were around and they build their structures that way. Next. This is another example of a similar style of architecture. You notice that in the back, there is almost like a warehouse building. But there was always a facade and the facade was to attract people to that particular building or that particular house. The use of porches was imperative because of the weather, the climate in many of these places were very harsh. And so shading was in order to survive the heat was necessary. And this is an interesting picture that I found that is actually that used to be in Coachella and this is during the railroad. This is where they store the steam locomotives. And again, a wood, simple structure. But you know, structures like this do have a enormous amount of character, especially with those steam locomotives staring out of the building. As far as the housing was concerned, it was very simple. It was a simple, nondescript architecture predominantly made out of wood and later adobe. The porches you would find over and over again. After, this is in the early nineteen hundreds, this is a schoolhouse in which he there was a revival throughout California and other places of the Victorian style of architecture. And this was a far more sophisticated building than the ones that I showed you before. He had a bell tower and it was probably ship lap siding or sometimes stucco as well. And then the adobes. The adobes were used for primarily self-preservation. Some of the adobe buildings that you find, the walls are at least twenty-four inches thick. The windows were very minimal. And that was an attempt that during the summer to keep the interior of the building cool. But also during the winter is keeping the interior warm. So it was a very environmentally prudent solution at the time. Next. And then later, of course, the adobe style became almost classical. And this is the interior courtyard of the Mission in Santa Barbara. Where you'll see the handmade tiles that were done from the clay that they found outside the building itself. They were all hand-formed and very thick. And very porous as well. But given the fact that you had a building that was built out of adobe, the weight was compared to the weight of the adobe was negligible. But again, it was an attempt to keep buildings cool. All right, the next one. This is an illustration that I did many years ago for a book that the Trustbook Historic Preservation was putting together. And this is a depiction of Casa de la Guerra in Santa Barbara, again, using the same technique. So it became a little more sophisticated. And here is a picture of it, the last modification that was done. And if you notice the breezeway and that again was not it was not for cosmetic purposes. It was because they were used to dealing with the climate. So in effect, these buildings were very environmentally sustainable. And even today, if you get a chance to come to Santa Barbara on a hot day and you walk underneath some of these arcades, you will find that the temperature drops two or three or four degrees. It's amazing how that works. And then later on, the whole Midwestern style came and became very popular in California. It was the either the blonde brick buildings that you would find in places like Iowa and so on. But still, it's interesting that if you notice carefully, some of the windows that were used were actually of the Victorian style. But the most important thing in this picture is to see how again, the our processors try to find a way of keeping things cool and comfortable for the people that were going to use these businesses. And this is another example of truly the building on the right is probably a nineteen forty's building next to a slightly older building. And then the style began to get a little more sophisticated. You see moldings, you see tiles, you see articulations in the upper levels. The use of awnings, sometimes they were retractable. The indentation of the front door. And because they got double displays, they have this place facing the street, but then as you walk into the front door, there was another display. But at least you were under the shadows. And then came the Mission Revival Style. The Mission Revival style had to do with the more sophisticated styles of adobe buildings that we saw previously. And I found this picture of the Greyhound Station back in nineteen thirty-six, I think, which what defines some mission style is is very simple. There's some pediments on top in the facade. And in some awnings and so on, but I just love this little building, which is apparently no longer there. And then later on, in nineteen twenty-five, was the train station, which took on a more of a Spanish colonial revival style, but a very simple one. If you notice the whole rhythm of this building, the whole rhythm of openings, the arches and the square openings with the moldings on the corner and so on. This was a beginning attempt to basically romanticize the architecture. And in Santa Barbara, again, this is a mission style architecture is its characteristics is very large overhangs. The the windows were double-hung windows, again, the Victorian style. And there was a series of arches and and right in the center, it was the celebration of the entrance with a pediment on top. And then that same style became a little more abstract. This is a a building in San Diego designed by Beltran Goodhue. And and here you again see the the arches, the pediments, the domes, et cetera. Incidentally, Beltran Goodhue was a very prolific architect whose specialty was designing cathedrals around the United States. His house was he designed a very tiny house for himself in Santa Barbara. And he did the monosito country club, if you ever get a chance to see it. So he did a lot. And this building is part of Balboa Park. Next. And then came the Spanish colonial revival. And very briefly, I want to tell you a story on that, how this came about. At some point, there was the what is called the Romantic Revival. Now, Romanticism was not a kind word as it was first developed. Romanticism, if by definition, is that that invokes to the emotions. And there were artists like Delacroix who did the raft of the Medusa. I don't have a picture of it, which really shows a very disturbing disturbing attempt for people from a shipwreck trying to get into a raft and some of them are below water and some of them are above. Or there would show paintings of a lion devouring a horse and that sort of thing. That was the definition of Romanticism, that that invokes to the emotions. But in the nineteen twenties, there were several movies from Hollywood. One of them is The Alhambra. The other one is Sorrow. And this was a series, a television series that showed this guy with a mask and a sword and a cape trying to save the the princess of that area. And everybody became in love with this concept. And so and this is in Santa Barbara particularly because it was around this time that the devastating earthquake of nineteen twenty-five occurred. And the Santa Barbara was not Spanish architecture. It was they had the train station and they have other adobes and so on, but it was predominantly mid-western architecture. And because of the earthquake and because of the fact that they were the buildings were unreinforced, a lot of them, most of them collapsed. And there were some really nice ones. The Bank of America Building was a beautiful neoclassical building, but they were all destroyed. So I'll tell you a little more about that in a minute. And this is a sketch that Beltran Goodhue did of Balboa Park. And even from this sketch and at a distance, you will find that it was reminiscent of some of the villages of Spain with the towers, the low-flung structures compared to more towers and so on. And so from there, it gave it gave rise to the what we know today as the Balboa Park. And this is what happened. This is a style from Spain that was used by famous architects in Spain, the Chiris Gresk brothers. There were two brothers who just completely went out of control with detailing. Every aspect of it was was designed. And sometimes you'll see birds and snakes in it didn't matter as long as it was intricate. But it was kind of a masterful way of doing things because they left some blank stucco features. And that was one of the techniques that I think in Spanish revival is often used. But the Spanish revival in the Coachella Valley was actually started very modestly. And these are some of the original cottages from La Quinta, the hotel. Beautiful little buildings, again, having the porch. It's the beginning of the sophisticated style of architecture in a very simple way. The way the fireplaces were dealt with. The window placements, which is very important and so on. And then this building still exists. It's been modified, of course, today, but this is another attempt. Here it is. Another attempt of dealing with Spanish colonial revival style. In this case, similarly to the architecture that you would find in San Clemente, there were some overhangs without any gutters. There was the articulated entrance and there was the tower. And why the tower? Well, just simply to give the building some three-dimensional aspects of it. I put this picture in here because I just love this this little train station, which is no longer there, of San Clemente. I think architects by this time learn how to manipulate the style of architecture, following all the rules of the ratio between the mass, the stucco mass in the openings. But in this case, the architect went further by creating some interesting forms that surrounded the large window that you see in front of us. And then putting some ridiculously big column, which was structurally speaking, not necessary, but nonetheless, it became a bit of a jewel box. And and in any style of architecture, the goal is to create small jewel boxes or big jewel boxes, essentially. And this, of course, was in Palm Springs. Originally, this started out as being a hotel. Very simple Spanish colonial revival architecture. The building is tall. The windows on the upper levels are small. And then you have the arcades in various chimneys. And finally, you have the tower. And of course, this building is now used as a medical building. And this is another example of La Quinta. It's just it's just very charming and so on. And some of those cottages are still there. This is an interesting example that I love in San Clemente. This is the Beachcomber Hotel. And it goes to show how interesting architecture can become just by changing and following the slope of the street. In this case, there is a sloping street that go up to the corner. But you can see here we have the handmade tiles. You have the rafter ends, which are deliberately long. And why? So that they can cast a shadow on the building. That was the primary reason. There was no other reason. Shadows are very important. And 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 this is one example, and I'll show you more later. And then the next slide is the is is the Beach Club in San Clemente. A brilliant building, only because from certain Uh, only because from certain. Areas, it looks like a ship. Uh, it has a lot of nautical features to the building. The whole composition of the masses, the the thick enormous tower. In short. Uh, together way, the deliberate. And well thought placement of the windows. And then in the back facing the ocean, there is a pergola, which is again executed. Very masterfully. And you would think that a pergola is a pergola, but boy, there's ways of turning a pergola into something very beautiful. And here is a detail which most people miss because a lot of people, sometimes they don't look up too much. But the the articulation at the end of the tower was used with tiny pieces of uh, glazed tile. And this is Casa Romantico also in San Clemente and I ran into a picture of a club. That either still there or not, I don't recall. That has a very similar entrance. And this is a uh. Uh, this is a reference to the uh. Moorish architecture. Uh, or the Persian architecture in this case. And so. Yeah. The the interesting part about this building is that you notice that even though the ceilings are tall, the pitch of the roof. Is almost minimal, just enough to. Uh, make it function and get the water out of the roof and into the ground. This is another example that I wanted to show you. This is a building uh, that you see uh. In front of. It's a large building, but I'm showing you this picture because here there is a. Study of two different types of architecture in. In the. In the foreground, you have the city hall building, which is very, very classical. Uh, Spanish colonial revival. And then you have the more organic building that you see in front. Uh, with very deep thick walls, sloping sills. And the overhangs, which again, uh, the shadows contribute to the design of the building itself. And then you partially see a Monterey balcony, which I'll show you more of a little bit later on. Well, here it is. Uh, this is uh. Monterey balconies were really just outdoor living spaces that were used uh, in in Monterey essentially. But in this case, the the original architect uh. Uh, created this balcony in a very, very delicate, sensitive way. And if you notice some of the rails, they were all, uh, they're all done with turnposts essentially. If you look at the underside of the balcony, you'll see the repetitive beam ceilings. And right where the columns are, they put some larger wooden brackets. So from a design point of view, this uh, this balcony is extremely special. And then if you notice that uh. That window, the right below on the right hand side of it. Um, this is, this is called an arabesque. And the arabesque were used in Persia, in Iran, in Iraq and so on. In order to bring light in. But keep. The heat out. Uh, so the sun would, there was be a filter uh, a screen. That kept the buildings in the harsh desert. Cool on the inside, but still having some light instead of the wide open windows. And then in Santa Barbara, back to Santa Barbara again, uh, Luther Riggs and George Washington Smith designed this Louvre Theatre. It is massive. But boy, it works so well. The building in front was deliberately set back from the street and the purpose for that is so that you. The the passerby. Would actually look and understand the building itself. And uh, in in this was the original concept, the study. Uh, sketch that led to this. This is a picture from the nineteen twenties without any landscape or anything like that. But if you notice that the whole front of the building on the uh, second floor is slightly curved. And by curving the wall, it gives a slight shadow. That turns the corner, making the building more interesting. The dentals above. It would be a method of terminating the building. Uh, rather than a molding, in this case, uh, they chose to use the. The dentals as they're called. And then where the stages in the back. They use some huge moldings. And they contain the building by having these vertical pillars on each side, on each end. Uh, this is the uh, hotel in San Clemente and the reason I'm showing you this is when you're considering any new development. This is a mixed use and it always was. It was a hotel on the third and second floor. And there were most likely shops. But if you notice, the building was done in a U shape and it created a courtyard in the middle. And that. Was a a a use in which uh, some of the retailers or can put a restaurant and put. Outdoor seating in the front. And this is a very, very effective. Uh, footprint or floor plan for some of the buildings. It gives light, maximum light, and here it is today. Uh, gives maximum light to all the rooms, the hotel rooms above. Now they're apartments and uh, locos apartments, I believe. And then you still have the various shops and restaurants at the bottom with a courtyard that takes you and pulls you. Away from the sidewalk. Very effective techniques. And then Spanish colonial revival, I, you can get as crazy as you want to. But this is a little chapel in Guadalajara, Mexico. Which is believed to have been designed by Otto Wagner. Who is a Viennese successionist. It was successionism was a very short period. In uh, in architecture. And. In this case, uh, I know that Wagner designed a building in Mexico City, which was in succession style of architecture. But in this case, I mean, it it. This was to come before the landmarks commission here in Santa Barbara. You would have to approve the building because it has all the elemental Spanish colonial revival style. You have the tiled roof dome. You have the canteros stone pillars, even though they're strange, but nonetheless. Uh, the, it, all of the. The individual elements are a little bit odd, but when you put the entire thing together. Uh, everything, everything is perfect and brilliant. And this is a. Building that has not been acknowledged anywhere. And uh, and then you see those uh, animal like structures carved that are canteros stone, which signifies. The earth's element, the wind. Water, fire and earth. Uh, so it has enormous symbolism. This little chapel is still there and is still operating as a chapel. And this is a building that I worked on many years ago in Santa Barbara. Um, there was a very nondescript building uh, in 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 the back that you can see. And the owner of the building asked me to design a facade for the building. And this was, the client was wonderful. He did listen a lot to the architect and. This is one of the buildings that I have most fun with. Uh, you have uh, the symbolic chimney that you find at the beginning. The stairway which has a sawtooth pattern for the purposes of shadows. Uh, in the middle of the tower, you have a Moroccan, a Moorish bu- building. And then you have the arabesque windows, so with the grills that you see there. And in the middle of the building, there was a wall fountain. That was actually uplift, uh, so that as the water was flowing, it would stick to the wall and it would just. Create a bit of a sparkle. And some of the buildings adjacent to that were of a similar style. And so it it did fit well as far as the. Uh, the size, bulk and scale and neighborhood compatibility. And then some of the other uh, styles that came into the Coachella was the international style. Uh, which actually gave birth to the, what is called the mid century style. The the homes and the buildings. Uh, that we now call the the mid century modern style. Uh, were actually part of the international style. And if you go back uh, to the previous slide, this is the, I I think it was a. It is a financial institution in Palm Springs. But it wasn't inspired by uh, the next slide, the the building designed by Oscar Nemeyer in Brussels. Oh, which is uh, an amazing piece of architecture. Both of these buildings are. But there was uh, an attempt to try to defy. The weight of the building by creating this very, very slender columns. And then from there you have the Palm Springs City Hall and this was one of the original pictures of it. Using the screens and again, the screens were used to filter the building from the sun and the heat. And then the entrance itself, it just became a very contemporary expression in the, in the same style of architecture. Again, celebrating the three Mexican palm trees in the middle. Which uh, which also is interesting. If you go by this building and if you look at the shadows and the way the sun works and comes through the. The circular opening of of the roof, it just creates a really wonderful special effect. Uh, this is one of my favorite buildings and uh, in in Palm Springs. The last time I went by this building was a. Automobile uh, dealership and now I understand it's something else, but. It it, see how the whole. Style of architecture was transitioning into something really, really interesting. And this is also at the time in which you find the Spuknik type architecture. Uh, what is called the Googie architecture that a lot of the restaurants began to use. That was similar to the nineteen fifty five Chevys and Cadillacs and so on. They all had this ship, uh, spaceship like uh, expression to this, but. Uh, fortunately, this building is still here and is still wonderful. And this is some of the mid century residential. There's a lot of them. Very interesting what the, they used to do. Uh, the configuration of the roof itself actually came from an architect. From Mexico City called Felix Candela. Uh, that used fin shell structures. But here, the brilliant part about this little building, and there's many of them. Is really the way they projected this masonry pieces for the simple purpose of generating a shadow. Which makes a boring building look absolutely interesting and wonderful. And the same principle followed when the Beverly Hilton Hotel was originally designed. Uh, and this was uh, at the same period of time. Uh, the original design was meant to be a Spanish colonial revival building. But the style of the mid century was so strong. That the owners of the building decided to stay within the mid century style. The building was recently um, restored and remodeled. But the, the style of architecture still remains the same. And to me, this is one of my favorite buildings because so much is going on. It's a nineteen, it's a mid nineteen forties building. And a lot of really brilliant features that are occurring here. Is the way the, the balance between the openings that are emphasized. And the rhythm of the windows and throughout. And then when you go up to the roof, you see this. Almost our deco element that curves around. And then finally, you have the rectangular piece on top. It 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 is a brilliant piece of architecture from an architect's point of view. That uh, really I haven't seen anyone, anywhere since. And so. It, you have the perfect example of some of the best nineteen forties architecture building in City Hall. This is another example. I believe this building is in Ventura, but this was the same style of architecture. Uh, nineteen forties and if you notice, they. They tried to add a little bit of spice by tilting the windows uh. And again, um. Driving the user of the building. Into a recess opening. And uh, even the lettering is is wonderful. And then I was reading about this uh, the Aladdin nightclub in in Coachella. In which some of the best performances, performers from the blues to jazz to. Again, Frank Sinatra and so on used to come here. It was a grand time, I think. It was a, it was a time of elegance and people wanted to be seen. The. The entrance, entrance doors were recessed significantly and this is to allow the people to. Women and men to show off their gowns and tuxedos and so on. Uh, but I know that the building was demolished since, but wouldn't it be great to bring that back again? And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the desert style design, the porches, the arcades and the courtyards. I think we went through this before. Uh, this is the Arlington Theatre. And it was designed by Joseph Plunkett. The whole building was designed on a paper liner from a hotel. Joseph Plunkett was a brilliant architect, but he liked to. Drink a little. And so he went to Los Angeles. Uh, and he knew that he was going to be competing against A C Martin. Who did a lot of movie theaters, uh, movie palaces as they were called in the past. And when he realized that it was almost time to make his presentation the next morning and not feeling too good. Uh, he drew some perspectives and sketches on, again, the. The liners of the drawers. And the, the people from the Fox Arlington were so impressed that they gave him the commission. But this building is actually a um. Is similar to what happens in the op, uh, on the Paris Opera House, in which, you know, the famous opera house that. That has the double stairs going up to the theater itself. And this was a ceremonial space. It was where people would arrive. Uh, people will chat before they went into the theater itself. And women and men would dress up in their tuxedos because this is where all the premieres happen during the nineteen. Uh, twenties and thirties, even nineteen forties. And then they went inside the building. And uh, it is.
Henry, I was just, Henry, this is Gabriel. I was just gonna mention, our our city attorney advised us that we're getting close to six, so we won't be able to go. Too much after six, so um, oh, we'll, we'll try to go through the slide a little faster.
Okay, let's just work faster. Okay. Uh, again, arcades, uh, next. Pocelles, uh. Next. And here's another Pocello in Europe, where you get a chance to provide some small restaurants and so on. And another Pocello, also someplace in Spain. And this is the uh, El Pocello in the, in Santa Barbara. This is an original mini shopping center. And this is the central plaza of that, but uh wonderful detailing, the use of citrus trees, et cetera. Next. This is a concept for De La Guerra Plaza, uh that was done by George Washington Smith and Wilford Rigs. And then later I was uh commissioned to do a design for the De La Guerra Plaza. And the little Pocello that leads into State Street. Next. And this is the elevation that I came out for that little Pocello. The pedestal is there because the King of Spain donated a statue of King Carlos. Uh but uh eventually, I think next slide. Uh the statue was removed. And it was removed because it offended some group of people. And it ended up at the proceed of the statue itself, a bronze statue. Next. This is De La Guerra Plaza, again, with the various styles of architecture. You have the Spanish colonial revival and then to the right on the building, you have the adobe-style building Casa de La Guerra. And way in the background, you have a much more modern Spanish building. It's a great composition. The building heights and variations, and these are somewhat important, so let's go through these quickly. You see what happens to the roof in this particular street. It it just creates the sense of a village, I think, that these buildings are small, that two or three stories high. Uh or one, oh sorry, one and two stories high. But just the way the whole thing was sculptured uh when buildings were being built. I'm sure it was not deliberate because some of these buildings were built at different times. Next. And the same with the residential area. This is a nineteen twenties housing, uh group of houses in front of the Santa Barbara Mission. And this is another example of a big building. Generally, the rule, the taller the building, the simpler it has to be. But it's very well articulated. This building was designed by Julia Morgan and it's there. Uh and same designer that uh did the the Great Castle, Hertz Castle. And this was one of the few women architects at the time. And this was the original sketch. Another example of Spanish colonial revival of approximately the same period of time that we were just talking about. And this, I love this photograph because it shows basically to the left, you have Casa de La Guerra, which is an adobe. And then you have the Spanish colonial revival for the El Pocello and how they they both complement one another. And this is crazy architecture done by an architect the of the of Spain, Jujo, which was a contemporary of Gaudi. But it's still a Spanish colonial revival building. Another example, this is a fairly new building that was done recently. And the courthouse, and very briefly, this building doesn't make any sense. Uh the exterior does not relate at all to the interior. Uh uh William Moser designed this building just so that he could give a romantic expression on the exterior. But inside, some of the what seems to be a doorway going into uh a loggia. Uh it's really, there's a blank wall behind it, so it was a stage set, but it really affected one. It really does work. And this was the um the drawings that were done after the nineteen twenty-five earthquake when they were rethinking the State Street. Next. This is uh an exercise or a master plan that I did for Barado in in Arizona. Uh even though this was in the middle of the desert, uh the the call was to try to build a downtown in Barado on both sides of the street. But there was this currently nothing and it it applies to the same principles that I talked about, the porches, the arcades, the different styles of architecture. Next. And this is a recent drawing that I did. Uh Santa Barbara again is trying to rethink itself and this was a, this is a mixed-use project with workforce, housing, rentals and condominiums with retail at the ground floor. We'll go through this quickly. Uh what I like to do in all my projects is really to really focus on the details of the buildings. And uh and this is an example of a detail sheet that I did for a house that I was designing here in Santa Barbara. Next. Uh this is sometimes what happens with some of these buildings, the opportunity to create a piece of sculpture. With, this is the Arlington Theater. Uh but everything from the tiles and uh in in the stucco, et cetera. Next. And I'm always showing you this picture because it shows you what happens to the shadows. If you notice, the the at the top, the edge of the tile roof. The shadows at certain times of the day are so deep. And they become part of the design of the architecture. This balcony, projecting balcony that you see here again, has no relationship to the interior. But it was just simply to break the massive wall up with a shadow line. We'll go quickly through this, uh Gabriel, so that we catch up. Uh this are the miradores that I was talking about, the Aravasca. This, this is the cathedral in Peru, in Lima, Peru. Where it allows the light to come in, but it keeps the building cool inside. Next. Projecting balconies at corners. Uh this is a neo-modern um Moroccan architecture. More details and more compositions for forms. Raw iron details, I mean, you can become very creative with them in a very simple way. Like this door pool. This is a parapet that was done by Gaudi in Spain. Very interesting, using uh tile roofs and and brick. And here you see the richness of materials if they're applied correctly. Again, this is a loggia that has no relation to the inside in the Santa Barbara courthouse, but it's beautiful from the outside. Next. And this is part of the courthouse as well. Uh this is the jail section of the courthouse from the nineteen twenties. They can never tear this building up because inside the whole interior of this building, they're jail cells. And we tried to remove them at one point. We couldn't do it. We would have destroyed the building, so we left them. So the building is predominantly empty. Really creative things like using light fixtures. Buying a, or this I love, similar to the Apple logo that is used in the Apple stores. Tells the story. Three-dimensional signs are great. Next. And you can see another one here. An elephant. I don't know what they sell inside. Elephant food? Not sure. Next. And very quickly through this, I I'm gonna go through this very quickly. This is a picture that was taken in the nineteen sixties of Santa Barbara. Um I had just come from uh Paris and I got together with a uh mayor and a couple of city council people and I said, look, why don't we just simply remove the cars from State Street? Or at least one lane in each direction and increase the sidewalks. And after being threatened uh by the merchants, uh we finally did it. But it was a lot of people were angry. Next. This is a wide streets now that we have. Next. And this is what happens when you increase the size, the width of the sidewalks. You have opportunities for the pedestrians and the car becomes minimal. And finally, all I uh would like to leave you with right now is that the details are very important. Make absolutely sure that whatever building you're approving now or in the future is that that building is going to stay there for the next twenty-five years or even longer. So it's really important because that's going to develop the personality of of which had the city of Coachella. And every building is absolutely critical and important. So that's the end of my presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Henry and the commissioners. I I know uh you have very little time for questions. I don't know if you have a question for for Henry about his presentation. Um but uh lock to do that before move into the regular meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanna commend him. Amazing work, Henry. I looked at your resume. I was gonna ask you, when you design a building or you get commissioned to design a building, do you start with the elevations first or you do your floor plan?
Both. You have to do both at the same.
Okay.
In the back of your mind, you have to think how the building functions and on the other side of the mind, you have to raise the elevations. Otherwise, you get in trouble.
Henry, uh I think we couldn't hear you. I don't know if it's on your end or our end, but can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, we get, I could barely hear you on our end.
Maybe I should get a little closer together.
Now we can hear you.
Okay, good. Did you hear my answer?
Yeah, that was it. I was just curious of how you did your initial work. Did you do the elevation first and work on the floor plan? But in the opposite way?
Yeah, so a little bit of both.
Any other questions from commissioners? No? Okay, well, thank you so much, Henry, for your presentation. Um we really appreciate you being here and taking the time to meet with us virtually, so thank you so much for everything.
It's been my pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at six twelve P M. Oh. Oh. I didn't. Okay, all right. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Um I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six sixteen P M. And we are going, uh Commissioner Navarre, they can't lead us in this much of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Thank you. And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Liad, present. Vice Chair Navarrete.
Present.
And Chair Beatin.
Present.
And alternate commissioner, who gets is.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have any requests from commissioners? Staff. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Thank you. Can we get a second?
I'll I'll go ahead and say, uh Dr. Figaro's motion.
Thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And I'm Chair Beatin.
Hi. Thank you. We're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. This is for planning commission meeting minutes for June first, twenty twenty-two. Um if everyone got an opportunity to look at the minutes, do you have any changes or recommendations for those? No changes? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June first, twenty twenty-two?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. And can we get a second?
A second.
Thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Madam Chair Beatin.
Hi. Okay, we're gonna move on to written communications. Do we have anything?
Um let's stop us.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Uh no public comments here at the council chambers, but in
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to reports and requests. Uh do we have any reports from staff?
No reports from staff.
And do we have any requests from the commission?
Uh only requests would be, bring back an update on the Sunline Transit Agency hub and see where that's at.
Okay, and I'll update you at the end.
Okay.
Okay, it's coming up.
Okay, anything else from commissioners? Okay, perfect. So we're gonna move on to our first item. It's a non-hearing item, item number two. And this is request for our first twelve-month time extension for conditional use permit number three thirty-six. Uh to convert an existing three thousand four hundred square foot commercial building into a one thousand five hundred square foot retail cannabis microbusiness and one thousand nine hundred square foot coffee shop with art gallery. Um and I'll let staff take that over whenever you're ready.
I think you, Madam Chair, we have have a brief presentation on the site of. Uh so, uh thank you Chair, members of the Plan Commission, the site before you has requested twelve-month time extension for conditional use permit. That was approved for uh a proposed dispensary with a
That was approved for uh a proposed dispensary with a ancillary business. Uh, it's an existing commercial building, three thousand four hundred square feet, uh, which would be a one thousand five hundred square foot retail cannabis micro business. Um. And uh, this is one of our social equity applicants with the city and also one thousand eight hundred square foot coffee shop uh without art gallery at E five five nine one three through uh Boulevard. Um, just some details, the Plan Commission and City Council did approve a conditional use permit uh for this dispensary. Uh, company was also a change zone to apply the retail cannabis overlay zone. Uh, there's no extension needed for the change zone because once the ordinance is adopted and it's uh in effect and doesn't need to be extended. Uh, here, just a photo of the location. It's a little bit older photo. Those those uh murals aren't there anymore in the site plan. But this gives you idea of the concept that was uh reviewed by the Plan Commission, which would include some outdoor dining areas, uh opportunities for uh events uh outdoors and uh what it would look like material with art gallery. Uh, some more renderings, so you can see the art gallery with the doors open to the building and the coffee shop and dispensary in the outdoor areas that would be activated with this business. There's a site plan and originally the applicant was proposing to do uh parking on site. Um, and uh, working with the applicant, when the plan check process, so the applicant submitted the plan check a couple of months ago. Uh, but the parking as proposed conceptually, the Plan Commission and City Council does actually not, doesn't work. There's no way to accommodate the access that uh the applicant needs with the space. But the site, it's kind of located towards the side of the property. Uh, so we are trying to work with the applicant on them accommodating on street parking on Third Street, which would be diagonal parking, which also may require uh building out a uh bullbowl on the corner of Third Street and Grapefruit, so that um the diagonal uh park spaces are protected because Grapefruit Boulevard uh does have fast-moving traffic, so. Um. And I'm sorry, here's the site plan that shows the balance of the coffee shop and and the retail uh dispensary, which would be at the front of the building. And uh, there are some minor modifications that need to be made in order to accommodate the restroom. Uh, the restrooms can't be accessed between uh two other spaces that are shown here, so that it's also kind of being worked out right now uh with the city engineer and also the building official. Um, but uh, staff does recommend the Plan Commission grant the first twelve month time extension for the conditional use permit with the new expiration date of May of two thousand twenty-three. Staff is supportive of it because they are going through the time check process. They submitted their building permit application a couple of months ago and they are trying to work out those issues with us and we believe they'll have approved plans and probably the next month. So that's the end of my staff report and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer any. I'm not sure if the applicant is i- in the audience, uh, but uh, his name would be Armando if he is in the way.
Thank you. Um, do commissioners have any questions on this item?
So you, do you, what do you think would be their kind of open day within the year?
Yeah, they're they're trying to work out those issues and move as soon as possible. I think they thought they would be under construction already. Uh, so realistically, to finish all the interior improvements, it probably the earliest to open would probably be December. There's 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 quite a bit.
Sooner than I expected.
Yeah.
I thought they would be like mid March or something next year.
Yeah.
Three, so.
It's hard to, that's that's early, second, first.
Any other questions from commissioners?
So this is just the first extension that we're gonna grant. Uh, how many extensions can a business get? Three, two?
Uh, three, uh, one-year time extension.
Three, one.
So the diagonal parking, would it, would it be like the parking here on Sixth Street? It'd be the uh, what it used to be at Sixth Street, the diagonal parking, like um, where the park is, the park.
Yeah.
Parking, like, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. So there, yeah, all the parking you see around this park here in City Hall, uh, that would be the idea.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
And do you know where where they are in their process for the cannabis component of it? Because I know that takes also so there's a, there's a
Yeah.
piece, but then there's also the cannabis piece.
So the, so the applicant, um, Armando Lurma, uh, he has received his approval from his state license already. So he's he's really motivated to finish the project because he already has his state license.
It's just the construction piece that's delayed.
Any other questions? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? Oh, do we have any public comments for this item?
What?
It's not a.
I don't see any, but it's a non-hearing item, so.
Right.
You don't need to.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Put up the PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah, can you go back to the staff recommendation?
So, um, a motion to a motion to a motion staff recommendations of the Plan Commission to grant the first twelve month time extension for public cannabis, C U P three three six with a new expiration date of May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Can we get a second?
I'll go ahead and second, Dr. Figaro's motion.
Thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Liang.
Hi.
Uh, Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Chair Beaton.
Hi. Okay. Perfect. So we are going to move on to our public hearing calendar. Um, next is item number three, A M P M type twenty-one alcohol sales. And I believe we received some information on that, um, whenever staff is ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and members of the planning commission. Uh, so before you is the conditional use permit three fifty, and so this came before you as a continued item, I believe, quite a few times. And so this is appearing before you as a formality, as it was of uh, those who are public hearing that, um, uh, for for the A M P M type twenty-one license as you're located at um, corner of Great, in Avenue forty-eight. Um, so unfortunately, the recommendation is that applicant had actually withdrawn this application and this is um, formality and therefore, um, the there's no further action for the planning commission. And that's it for this particular uh staff report. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer them. I don't believe the applicant's here, but it's a little bit shape for the withdrawal.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
So my question, uh, public, public hearing, do you want to open it or?
No, I think you can ask and then we can do it publicly. Yeah.
Okay. So does the applicant have type twenty-one on any other complex in the city or is it just the forty-one?
Oh, so this, so he, the applicant currently has a twenty type license.
Okay, and all on all there. Uh, George, that one.
I could for sure say just for this one.
Okay.
So they do have a current, they do have an existing twenty.
Okay.
They're, they applied for the type twenty-one, which allowed them to have sold wine, beer and distilled spirits. So currently, they do have an existing one, which allows them to own, so beer.
Okay. Um. And in the letter, he talks about specific like, um, it's a women's tree, because I was looking at previous such gen items, I was intrigued, what he, what were the new conditions where the that they had asked?
So staff has conditioned as part of the C U P that in that particular site that they um, to ensure that they are providing the maintenance and repair for landscaping and most importantly, the continuation of sidewalk from from the end of that project, essentially all the way to the bridge.
Okay.
Because there's that inconsistency and
Yeah, no, or the, or the wash, where the um, where the car wash is, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that was that item number, um. I went back and looked for it because I was wondering what it was. So now it makes sense. It was item number six on the condition, condition six of.
Do we have any other questions from the commission on this item? Okay, so if it's withdrawn, do we have to, um, Henry, do we still have to open up the public hearing?
You can. I mean, if there's somebody there from the public that would like to say something, you can open it up. But since the um, the commission's not really taking any action, um, you you don't have to.
Okay. I don't know who the, who we have, but yeah, if we can look at the participants and um. Because we have it on the agenda, I think it's appropriate to do so. So we're gonna go ahead and up, open up the public hearing at six thirty-one P M for item number three. Do we have any public comments at this time? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for item number three at six thirty-one P M. And since there's, there is no action that has to be taken by the commission, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number four. And this is for Coachella Lakes R V Resort type forty-one alcohol sales.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Um. Nikki Gomez, Associate Planner. So this is um before you is a a type forty-one alcohol license. And this is conditional use permit three five three, and this is for the Coachella Lakes R V Resort. I'm sure you're quite familiar with this particular area. And so this is the R V Resort um, up all the way to our kind of northern part of our a boundary over in Dillon Road and in Tyler Street. Um, there's an existing uh R V coach resort there already, and so this will apply to the newer portion of that development. I can show you on the site. So this type forty-one license will be utilized by the registration office right at that corner of um, a budding, almost a budding Dillon Street right there. Now, that will, that will be their new registration office as well as their new clubhouse right at that um, east portion of the the site. So as I mentioned, this is a newly, you know, uh, developed and in currently in construction, R V Resort that will be uh, developing this area. And so um, since this is a vital part of then that resort, um, we have requested that we wanted to continue the item as well as the applicant also, um, because we'll infer the discussion of some of the conditions that are in that particular uh staff report and in the resolution. And so um, staff recommends that the planning commission continue this uh consideration or resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash nineteen for the next meeting, which is July sixth, twenty twenty-two. Um, as well further discuss um, the conditions and then specified by the letter before you through email specifically those three conditions that are in this particular report. That's for my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any of your question. And I believe that the kid is also um with us if you have any further questions, too.
Okay, thank you. Um, does the commission have any questions at this time?
Just to clarify, this is R V Park, right?
That that is correct.
Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing at six thirty-four P M. Do we have any public comments for this item? Okay. Seeing that, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty-five P M. And would anyone like to make a motion?
All right, uh, I'll make a motion with staff's recommendation to continue uh this item to the dates turn of one July sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and can we get a second?
Hold on a second.
Okay. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Fiero.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Liang.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Madame Chair Beaton.
Hi.
Pushing past.
Okay. Perfect. So we'll be seeing that item again. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to our informational item or section. Do we have anything from staff?
Um, just to update, um, on a couple items. One is, uh, I know the commissioner was asking about the Sunline uh, Transit Club, and that was reviewed by the Plan Commission a few months ago. And it was continued. Uh, and so Sunline's been working on some revisions based on some of the design recommendations. And I believe they have a few options that they're ready uh to present. So we're looking at the item coming back, I believe, the first meeting in July, which is July sixth. So that'll be back soon. So we're, we're very anxious to see that kind of it develops.
Yeah.
So that's. Yeah, the associated project, which is, it's supposed to be transit-oriented development, so the
Right.
the the housing is developed, but not the transit.
Okay. All right.
Um, just, uh, and and it, I think that's about it. Um, some of you received the, your, the business cards that were
Oh, yeah.
So some of you see those today. So people's will work out.
Okay.
Have one more. It's not a question that you can kind of like do presentation or like a summary and then another meeting doesn't have to be intense, but within like two months, just kind of how conditions are applied to certain requests. Um, and and the background and the decision-making process on those conditions.
Okay.
Just so we have an understanding, because I do, I read all the conditions. It's always into to know.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, there's definitely a process. And how the software is made.
Because it helps understand, you know, how that conditions and the, like this one specifically today where they're gonna go back to tough conditions.
Yeah. You can definitely do that.
Do we have anything else from staff?
Um, but nothing else. Just kind of looking ahead, um, there will be a few training opportunities for Plan Commission. I mean, there'll be the Planning Commissioners Academy and then there's statewide um, American Planning Association Conference in the fall. That will be in Anaheim. So just start thinking ahead. If you're interested in attending one of those, uh, the Plan Commissioners Academy usually happens beginning of two thousand uh, of the year, so it'll be in twenty twenty-three. But the American Planning Association Conference, uh, the statewide conference will be I believe in the end of September, a lot, or October.
All last.
So I'll send out information to the Plan Commission and see if maybe you are interested in attending, but you know, uh, usually the city will be able to cover the registration in any logic that's requested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, anything from commissioners? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at six thirty-nine P M. Thank you.